If one of my laptop was working, I finally just bailed out on that, so. Soon as I see a picture we can go.
Okay, I'll call the Staples City Council meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by. Blake and seconded by John.
Other way around.
Other way around, okay, I'll get it by the end of the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, carry. Approved consent counter, which is the minutes of the September twenty-sixth meeting and payment of bills.
Second.
Moved by Doug and seconded by, oh man, John. I'm too nervous. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both same side, carry. Public hearing for body camera policy review. What's that all about Gerald?
What's that?
Was that all about Gerald?
Yep, just opened the public hearing and I'll let the police chief kind of take it from here, but we have acquired body cameras that we've been talking about and one of the requirements of that is to hold a public hearing so people are aware of what their policy is regarding those cameras, so.
Yeah, the basic point of it is that we're going to be recording the public, so we're open to public input on when and how they should be activated, deactivated, that kind of thing. So we've provided the stat or the policy to you guys and can review and it's pretty straightforward. When we turn them on and off and it's going to be a huge change for us to have these and a learning curve, I think, a little bit to know that, I mean, we recorded a lot already, but this is going to be a whole nother level of being recorded all the time, so.
Were you even in your conversations in the car with another officer?
There are certain times they would be, but most times it says we can deactivate them for that, so.
Okay. Doesn't make sense to me that they can't have a conversation.
Yep, and in their policy it does dictate some of the reasons why we can deactivate them or not activate them at all. And one of them is like employee breaks and things like that. Restroom breaks and kind of the common sense stuff, but it does require.
On the second page in there, there are certain times where it's mandatory that you deactivate, other times where the officers have more discretion. Spelled out pretty clearly in here.
And there's been a lot of, you know, we're one of the last agencies around to implement them, so. Excuse me, there's a lot of history out there with other departments and policies, so we kind of looked at what's working and what's not working and went from there.
So does that go right to the server then, or?
Yep, we had to buy a separate server for the storage.
Okay, and then they're stored all along? It's probably in there.
There's going to be a retention period that's different for each type of call, so like a domestic will be saved X amount, DWI will be served, you know, and some stuff will auto purge after that retention period is up. So it'll be a big project.
Comments out there, public hearing?
Um, I have a question, one thing just came up, uh, in the police report, there's a lot of like chasing dogs and all that stuff, would you be recording that kind of stuff?
Typically, it's only human interaction stuff, but if there's a, you know, if it's a dangerous dog or something that could escalate into more of a crime, for whatever reason lately, the dog calls have gone through the roof, but typically no, so.
And then also you deal with a lot of mental health issues, so like how would you redact that as to your request?
So anytime we're in a facility, like a mental health facility or the hospital or anything like that, they're deactivated. And then there's software for redaction that will go through and redact faces and like if there's juveniles present, um, we can redact that, anything that's private data. It would be the same for like a sexual assault or something where there's private or sensitive information in it, then we would redact that out if there was a request to release it.
And then how does somebody get access to it? Would it be a fee for you to look it up?
Yep, there'll be the standard records fee, which I believe is twenty-five dollars.
Any other questions? Well, then we'll close the public hearing and then that's it?
That's it.
Okay, good. Okay, consider approval of a budget adjustment to increase the account number from seven, seventy thousand to a hundred and two thousand.
So, uh, in Fund Twenty-three, that's our permanent improvement fund, um, we are requesting that the council increase the fire department equipment fund from that seventy up to a hundred and two, uh, relief association has donated funds to purchase. I don't know if I have the bills, it's in the pile of bills, but, um, maybe Blake, you can bail me out here, some extraction, cordless extraction tools.
Essentially, it's just like the jaws of life, we switched from a corded version of it to, um, cordless versions of them. So they purchased, um, four tools actually. They were used, but a demo set, so they went back to the manufacturer, they resurfaced all of them, cleaned them all up and made sure they're up to their standards, so that way they could still initiate a warranty for them. So that's really what they are, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you still have hydraulic ones too, or?
Yeah, so it's, they're still hydraulic, they're just cordless basically.
Right.
Um, the hydraulic ones will just go, um, onto a different truck and then eventually eliminate the very old and outdated ones that are on the trailer, you probably remember that, but, so just kind of shifting things around and putting newer equipment on newer trucks, basically. As we wait the arrival of our equipment truck. And we're not starting that discussion.
No.
You know, when you need them, you need them. I've seen when you, you know, I just, I'm thinking, you know, and maybe it's, uh, about the time I want to use my cordless drill.
Yeah, and these ones do have the ability to still plug them in to a generator, basically, so if the battery were to die, but the runtime on them is beyond like what you could think, I mean, and then they have like auto shut off on them too, so they're not draining batteries or anything like that. I think they came with a couple extra spare batteries that just sit on the truck fully charged all the time, so. They're pretty, pretty user friendly, they're a nice set of tools, so.
Okay, is there any other questions?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the budget adjustment from seventy thousand to a hundred and two thousand.
Second. Motion by John and seconded by Mary Jo. All in favor, say aye.
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 Both same side, carry. Committee reports.
Hi, do you want me to come up to the microphone or?
I will, I think so, otherwise I'll pick up the audio.
Hi, everyone.
Good evening.
So it's a fairly quick meeting on September twenty-sixth, um, a few, we did approve or they did approve a thousand dollar annual sponsorship, the regular sponsorship request to the Initiative Foundation. They usually ask for one thousand one hundred and twenty, for as long as I've been here, we've done a thousand annually. Um, there's quite the payback to the community and to the, the region from those dollars, so, um, it's good to show support to them. So Staples was awarded, the small cities development application, some of you are probably aware of that already, but publicly stating that now, we received nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty, which is what our request was, so we weren't, um, asked to take a lesser amount, which is great. Um, a few things I wanted to point out on that is that, um, it's been a while since we kind of talked into the details of it. That would cover approximately twenty single-family owner-occupied properties at a hundred percent, um, up to twenty-five thousand plus our twenty-five hundred that was allocated, um, as part of the application, um, to do those projects and then approximately five single-family rental properties at a seventy-thirty, um, range, so I want to say that the, the amount is twenty-five thousand per project, but they have to put in thirty percent. And then the city is doing a one percent, um, loan to them, um, for an additional five thousand if the project requires it. That can help offset that thirty percent to make it a feasible project for them. And then for a commercial, approximately five projects there and eighty-twenty split, um, I want to say it's fifty thousand, but I, don't quote me, um, Mark. Um, and then, uh, again, we did, I want, it was either, I want to say it was ten thousand dollars, um, forgive, uh, not forgivable, one percent loan to them as well to offset that, that project cost, so, um, overall, it's very exciting. Um, one of the things to keep in mind, and it's a question that will come up all the time as this gets more and more public, is the annual gross income limits is eighty percent of our, of Todd County, um, so if you are a, a single person that owns a home, this, if you think of owner-occupied homes, you can make forty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars to qualify, so you can still have a fair income, uh, a fairly reasonable good income and qualify for this, so you don't have to be extremely low to get access to these funds. Put it also in perspective, a family of four, two adults, one, you know, two children, you make seventy thousand, five hundred and fifty and qualify to have access to these funds. So something good for the public to know, you may get asked that a lot, is this something I can even take advantage of more, a lot of people will be able to. Um, any questions on the small cities?
What was the commercial amount?
The commercial, um, is an eighty-twenty split, so eighty percent forgivable loan slash, it typically ends up being a grant, it's just forgiven over a period of time. Um, and then twenty percent owner, um, owner, um, equity, which again, the city is giving a one percent loan to those as well to help offset that twenty percent, so that would go as that twenty percent, now if the projects get bigger, they can, they can go larger, it's just, this is how much the, and so it's eighty percent up to, I want to say it's fifty thousand for commercial projects through the, for the grant piece or the forgivable loan piece. Any other questions on that?
When do the applications come out or how can they get them?
They will be opening this spring, so there's some environmental review stuff that's being done over the winter time, so it's kind of a nice time, not a lot of people would be able to do projects over the winter, um, typically it's your windows, um, doors, siding, roofing, that kind of stuff, so it's a lot of, it'd be more spring activities anyway, so, um, they will be available in the spring, we're hoping, we're planning for early spring, um, potentially March, maybe even if we get everything done in time, to have the applications available in February, so people can get their projects developed early enough. They will be going out on a first come, first serve and nobody will have access, because we have such a high demand and keep it fair, nobody will have access to the applications prior to the release date.
Those who. Will be in the paper and stuff?
It'll be in the paper, um, it'll be on the website, we're actually going to, um, come that time when probably the day of the release of the applications, we'll do in a public meeting as well, so if people want all of the details, they can come to that meeting, um, and then pick up an application that same day, so.
People are talking, so.
Yeah, it's good, it's really good, if we are able to disperse all these funds, which I don't think people have a struggle with this time, we have had in the past, money get returned and so that actually pushed us out a couple, another year or so before we could go back and apply. But if all of these dollars go out, as we anticipate they will, we can go back and apply right away again and get additional funding.
One of the big que, uh, changes from the owner-occupied, single-family that we had before to this round is there's not that owner equity.
Yeah, that hundred percent of the project up to that twenty-five.
Kind of hampered the participation when we did it before, so if it's single-family owner-occupied, it's, you know, essentially a hundred percent.
The other really cool change or good change is, um, and we got in, I believe it's the first year that they started doing this, is population of five thousand or less communities can do all of their community as opposed to that very designated area where we've applied in the past, it was only, we had to pick a very designated area, typically, I think it was always a south-sided town, which had the greatest need for improvements to the lot, to the, um, buildings, for the single-family owner-occupied, just want to clarify what I'm referring to, and then, um, but this year, um, it is the entire community so long as they qualify with the income and the need, of course, so. That's the other really cool thing, I think, what was it, last year's projects, um, they could have an A and a B zone, so you could have, but you had to prioritize zone A and then a secondary if those funds didn't get dispersed in that zone A. But now it's just, everybody can have access, so I think that's where a lot of the demand is coming from too.
Commercial still and then designated.
Commercial still has to be designated, the funds come from HUD, which is a housing agency, federal housing agency, and so of course their priority is housing, but the fact that we can have commercial in there is cool, so.
If we don't, I, I think I understand it, but if we don't use the, all of the funding for the, say, the commercial in the, in the area, then it, you can stretch it out or move or, uh.
We can't change the, um, identified area of the commercial district, um, but if the commercial dollars after the first year, because it's a two-year grant, don't get used, we can allocate those into single-family, um, but we can't allocate anything from single-family or rental into commercial. Again, it's HUD's priorities, um, for what they want to fund, so.
So it can go from commercial to single-family, but not the other way around?
Yep. So they'd rather see all the funds, if possible, go towards housing.
And again, the, whatever's, uh, for single-family or single person and then one income or two income, do you, do you remember what the dollar was on that?
So if you're a, a household size of two, it doesn't matter how many incomes you have, if you're a household family of two, you can make up to fifty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty. Um, whether that's on two incomes, one and a half, whatever that may be, um, children's income do not count, so.
Is that based off of twenty-three?
This is, yeah, this is twenty, twenty-three, yep.
So.
It could change for twenty-four. I don't know how drastic it would be, but as of twenty-three, this is HUD's, um, income limits at the eighty percent, so.
Yeah, if it doesn't come out until twenty-four, they could change a little bit.
Yep, and we would go by the new, the most updated numbers. I doubt those would go down, I think they would actually just increase, so. Any other questions? Um, I just want to publicly congratulate the community on that, um, and the residents for turning in those surveys, the reason we received so much in this funding is because everybody turned in those surveys and showed the interest, without that, we couldn't justify getting such a large grant, so. In the next couple of years, we'll have over a million dollars hopefully going back into the community for improvements. Very proud of, very proud of the community for that. Let's see, um, I wanted to mention, you guys have a policy in your, in your, um, documents, which I never do, so I was quite impressed that I got it in there. Wadena County created a new tax abatement policy, wherever I stuck that, um, and it's very unique, it's for residential in Wadena County and it is, um, very, very flexible, which is very unique, um, something that we haven't seen, um, from either Todd or Wadena and I don't think many other counties. So they're really intending to try to spur new development in all of Wadena County, um, focusing on residential properties. So this would be single-family or two-family, so duplex style, um, they're offering up to five years at a hundred percent tax abatement or tax rebate, um, or for an abatement up to fifteen thousand dollars, whichever comes first, so if you hit fifteen thousand on your, your property within the first three years, your abatement's done. But if you were to build a house in Wadena County, you can get your property taxes for up to five years abated for the county side. You guys all have the policy in there, um, there is no application fee and it's a really simple application, so if you know anybody who's looking, um, of course, we want to encourage growth on Todd County's side too, um, but this is something that's a unique, um, a unique asset or unique incentive that we can offer for those who are looking to build. Otherwise, we talked about updates on programs and, um, the downtown revitalization, there's a mural going up right now, very drastically different from the original, uh, review that we had, I think I'd shown, at least some of you had seen it, um, very different, it's going to be very flowery, um, as I understand it, once it's done, you'll have to go and take a peek, apparently there's like in the stems of the flowers, there'll be, um, peek-a-boo staples, uh, things, kind of a search and find within it, um, check it out when it's done, it's going to be really cool. One of the other areas is Safe House Schools and Active Transportation Grants, so we've mentioned this before, um, looking at potentially splitting those into two different projects. Safe House School has different funding now, where we could actually take advantage of some other funding through the Active Transportation Program for a city, um, more of a city, um, I, ideal project, so something that would maybe ideally like get people off of the overpass, down to downtown safely without being on the road would be a good project for that one, so looking into it, um, the ARPA-funded infrastructure project that we applied for and received funding or approval for, um, that will be starting to happen in the spring, so there won't be any activity on that over the winter months. Now otherwise, we just updated on the Plaza, Essentia, Farmers Union and Burlington Northern Projects, um, and the Ives Family. It looks like there's concrete being laid at the Ives Family Project for the housing, um, Essentia, I haven't seen it, but Gerald said they're putting up walls, so that's pretty cool. I got to get to that side of town.
Footing walls.
Or what?
Footing.
Footing the walls, okay, I was really hoping to see them already, in the sky. Um, and Farmers Union, it appears they're going to be waiting until, um, the spring to get that, the padding, the padding, um, pads for the buildings down and stuff, so. I think they're pushing it a little too late to be able to get there this year, but I'm not sure that that's a big deal, based on the timing of their, their buildings coming in. Otherwise, that is all we talked about, any questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public works, Scott?
I'll start with, uh, one action item we have tonight, Minnesota Energy is requesting an easement, uh, they're on Fourth Avenue by the, the new Ives Development and they want to extend their gas main a little bit west and that will go into the city's substation property, they want to extend their main so they can pick up the last two houses on the, the west end of, of the development. So, um, the commission recommends that we grant them an easement, so we'll ask for a motion from the council.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the easement.
Second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Both same side, carry.
Thank you. Okay, a resident, we had a residence car that was towed, um, due to the painting project, he got notified on Friday when he was already out of town and they did the project on Saturday, commission, uh, recommended to reimburse for the towing bill, which ended up being a hundred and twenty-five dollars. In the future, I will put on the, the bid announcement that the contractors will have to notify homeowners within a proper amount of time. There's discussion on, uh, I got notified about some of the bricks that are downtown in the sidewalks, that, um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of them that have kind of been eaten away probably by salt and, and other things and, uh, we do have some extra bricks, but by the time I started counting, uh, we, we, we have more bricks that need to be replaced than we do bricks left and it, I'm thinking by the time we do that many, we did that many one by one, that we might as well look at an entire project, because it's just going to be a ma, I mean, in my, in my estimation, we'd just be chasing bricks around for a long time, so that's something we'll have to, uh, consider for next spring. Water tower is going to be inspected on the seventeenth or that, that week, we will have to drain it, um, we have already advertised that asking people to limit unnecessary use, um, we still will have pressure throughout the system. Uh, I have also notified coal, so the fire department knows if they have a, a structure fire within town, they'll have to find different sources of water, which they seem to be okay with and, so we've, like I said, we've advertised it, I think it'll be, it'll be okay, this is fairly routine, we try to do it about every five years. We are scheduled for water node installations for the, the week of November sixth through ten, again, we've, uh, the contractor sending out notifications to, I gave them a list of five hundred customers that was based on, um, I put that list together based on basically the, the, um, age of the water meter. We want to put nodes on new meters because those will, those won't be replaced, you know, anytime too soon, so we only want to go in there one time. So they have, customers should be getting a notification maybe today, um, so again, we've advertised that in the paper and, and on, on our website that we want the customers to, the customer has to make the appointment with the contractor, um, gave them the instructions to do that, so. If anybody asks you about it, then, I mean, they can certainly call, call me if they got questions, but, you know, we would do, we want them to make the appointment, it can be online or by phone.
So nobody in town has those yet, is that what you're saying?
We've put out, I, our staff has put out like five, just more as testing, you know, to see what kind of range we can get and give us a little bit of information, but basically nobody has them, yes.
Is it attached to the outside of the house?
It'll be inside, yeah. The reason for that is, uh, the, there's already touchpads on the outside, but they're, they're only using two wires. These have to go with three wires, so.
So the touchpads are no longer be.
No. No, these will be placed inside up high, they can be placed outside if, you know, if necessary, but we're looking for like close to a wall, just to get a better signal. We should be out of the drought warning phase by now, we've had some rain and cooler weather. We're, the school is participating in the Missouri River Smart Energy Squad Program, um, that's, we are also participating with them, they, uh, they give fifth graders, um, a curriculum and then also, you know, teach them about energy conservation, energy uses, energy types and things like that. It's been pretty popular with the teachers and it does, um, it is, it's, um, I'm trying to think of the word, but it, it, it counts as a curriculum with the, with the state, so, I mean, it's fine as far as the science curriculum goes. They, they also give the kids, you know, like a light bulb to take home and little tips on get their parents to conserve energy. John has also been in contact with the school in Missouri River, it may end up getting, uh, representatives from Missouri River to talk directly to the kids, which I think could be interesting for them, but it seems to be a pretty popular program, we've done it at the public school for the last few years and been doing that Sacred Heart for several years. And then the, uh, the annual area meeting for Missouri River will be held, uh, on October twenty-fifth at nine o'clock from, to one o'clock in Alexandria, if anybody's interested in, in going, uh, please let me know and I will get you signed up. If anybody's interested in, in going, please let me know and I will get you signed up. That's all I have.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions? Open forum. And then we'll go on to city administration report.
Just a few items. Continue with our labor negotiations with I E W, I B E W and L E L S, and then I think two weeks from now, we have our first meeting with AFSME. And as we continue to work through that process, we'll keep the council updated. Attended the groundbreaking over at the Nest at the, at the middle school, high school building, week before last. And if anybody who drives by there sees that, the work is progressing, so. Hopefully, the fall stays warm well into November, lots of stuff going on. And I think with the first little frost warning, all of the projects people have been thinking about all summer, finally are moving to the permit phase. Lots of fence permits and shed permits in my box, I showed up at work this morning, so. Get those processed and out and people can get their stuff done before the ground freezes, so. That's all I have.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.